Okay. You're not ten minutes late, you're right on time.
Ah. Oh, there it is.
Yeah?
Good evening. The last play is two, two, twenty-two's. Two, 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 two.
Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the listening audience on channel one ninety-one. Opening the Southampton Painting Board meeting tonight for February second, twenty-two. And we have a very short agenda tonight, but it is mostly including our bylaw revisions that have been ongoing. And we're gonna pick up tonight, all members of present, except Paul Fergal, who called in and asked to be excused. So, we'll start with Richard, and we'll pick up where we left off. And this week, we're starting with section seven dash six, zero, solar generating facilities. So, Mr. Harris?
Um, I'll just go questions, comments ahead at the back of it.
Right.
Sixty point five regarding decisions. Just general comment that many of these provisions should be in your standard site plan review requirements. And therefore, shouldn't need to duplicate here unless there's something uniquely specific to solar generating. A lot of these would seem to be something that you want to apply just about any site plan review. Therefore, it's just those criteria go into that section and not be under...
Duplicated under this?
Yeah, not duplicated here. One of the things that does is when you duplicate something, you tend to look at just here and don't think of it as being generally applicable. But when you put it under the more general category of site plan review, it gets picked up on every project, and people get used to looking at that section. Five B.
Conditions?
Yeah. It says to promote these objectives, I'm not sure what the objectives are that's referencing. And that may be something you're more from it. If, I think it might be consistent with the criteria that's in A. I think that may be what you're trying to say here. And...
Interpret it.
Because that seems to be what I would look for.
It seems to be referring to the other ones, right?
Yeah, to the criteria and not to, not to objectives.
So, you're gonna strike that, those four words?
Yeah, I'm gonna change that to the site plan review criteria.
Makes sense.
Seventy. Again, the fee should be addressed in your sports policies and procedures. Seventy point seven. And seventy point eight. I know you site plan review and site plan approval terms. And you have major site plan review, minor site. That can be confusing to people, especially when you use site plan review, site plan approval, because one step of every site plan review is the approval. And so, it's better to use a minor or major site plan. That, that gets more to what you're talking about. It gets into scale of the review and not into whether it's just a review or approval. Does that seem?
Yes.
And this will lead into changing the site plan review section as well of the bylaw. But that's gonna be many, many a word change as opposed to any substantive change. Again, it it seems under the minor that there's an effort to create a by right for small systems. There, so if the, and I understand there is some view that needs to be a by right for some larger systems in order, for green communities. And if so, I think that can be done which more surgically as opposed to everywhere. For instance, South Hadley, we made it by right if you were doing it over a existing parking lot. If you're doing it on an existing industrial facility. And we looked at different facilities in town that had the square footage necessary for, for a quote-unquote, large solar facility. Where they made the technical feasibility from a solar perspective not, at least met the threshold requirement. So, that's something I raised there because I think, not at this point, but maybe next year, you want to go back and revisit this, this whole issue of by right for larger facilities. So, you're not allowing by right everywhere, but not requiring special permit everywhere either. Because in some cases, you, there will be some locations that you wouldn't like to have by right larger facilities. It, it just makes sense.
Yeah, because the, you've already got the buildings is there, the space is already being used.
Yeah, if you've got a large industrial or shopping center or school facility, or I think, you even looked at, there's a golf course that the town in South Hadley owns, the ledges. And even calculated you could do a large facility under the state's definition under the parking lot of, of the golf course.
Could you use a privilege like it would be a by right use on existing, you trying to?
Yeah.
By an existing structure? Because it sounds like what you're trying to do is you don't want every homeowner coming in.
Right.
For a special permit.
Right. And what you wanna do is for residential, the small systems, for residential purposes, you just say by right for that, for the small system.
Right now, anything on a rooftop is by right, but anything that's in the, in the ground, they come to us.
Yeah.
I don't know whether that's, you, you figure that's gonna be stricken too? Because it's...
That's something we can discuss. I think that's, that's a more substantive discussion than we need to look at next year. And not as part of the revision that's going to town meeting.
I don't think a ground mount should be by right used because, you know.
Well, you, you know, we had to look at where the setbacks were, and if it, if it was an ISO where it was located, if it had to be screened by any kind of...
I think the part depends on the size of it and size of the parcel. If somebody's got two, if you've got subdivision of two acre lots, and somebody's gonna do a ten K system that may just have one or two panels, then nobody's gonna see.
Yeah, but like I think of, an example is like the Tasty Top, there's a...
Yes.
That's a huge, to me, a huge solar array. And it moves with the stuff like, what's it, seventy-five feet off the road and, I don't know about that.
Yeah.
Who wouldn't want, I wouldn't want that as a neighbor or a bugger or whatever it is.
No, I, I can't get over how that one got by, to be honest, the planning board over there, I just...
I mean, it's bigger than the garage.
Yeah.
Yeah, and typically, a residential showing me that big, really, the...
It's gotta be the size of this room, right?
It's gotta be at least ten K kilowatts.
Is that side of the street, though, considered commercial highway?
I know Tasty Top is, I don't know if that leaves as a...
No.
There's some feeling among some people that a residential should be allowed for, by right for twenty-five, thirty K because of at-home uses nowadays.
Sure.
I tend to disagree with that. I think if you're looking at twenty-five, even fifty K, you're talking, somebody's doing some type of business at home, they're not doing just a home.
Well, it should be relative to the amount of power they typically consume, right?
Yeah.
So, maybe, I would say, ten, twenty years from now, if everybody has electric cars and they have to charge them, maybe that's a...
That's for the next group of people.
Yeah, let them figure that out. But back to your point, you know.
For, for the purpose of the review, for getting to town meeting this may?
Yep, yep, yep.
I think the issue of what should be by right and special permit is something that we need to flag. That when you come back next year, we want to look at making substantive revisions. And that's something we can discuss in depth. And maybe that you decide no, you wanna leave where it is, or you may wanna say, yeah, let's tweak a little bit. It probably depends on what your objectives are. If you want to encourage solar, then you might do one approach. If the town's policies, you want to accommodate it but not encourage it, well, that's another line of approach.
Oh, let's see, where are you going, seventy-six?
Seven point seven A, B. Yeah, those, those procedures and po, and stuff that should be in your standard policies and procedures and not in the zone of bylaw itself. That's seven, six, sixty, C. Dimension and height requirements and that are under a seven, si, seven point...
Yeah, page four.
Page four. I think that should be a separate section along with screening, and I think those are something you wanna highlight and...
Make a table?
Or even just a subsection on height, on dimension, height requirements and have them, this is what's required for minor, this is what's required for major. But something that just draws it out so it doesn't get buried anywhere. And it really get, gets highlighted there. Same with screening. And under C one B, I have a question about that. Yeah, for, and one question I had, like on dimension requirements, side yard is twenty foot. Each side yard shall have depth of at least thirty-five feet. Well, you say it has to be twenty feet, but now you're saying it has to be thirty-five feet. In fact, I, I had confusion about how that gets interpreted and how that gets applied. I assume what you're saying is for solar facilities, you want to set back in the side yard at least thirty-five feet. And, and that standard setback is twenty, but you want to require thirty-five feet for solar, is that?
Sounds kinda stupid, doesn't it?
It's confusing.
It's very confusing.
Isn't twenty, isn't twenty adequate?
Twenty is like for, yeah, building, twenty, yeah, twenty is a building structure, accessory building.
So, wouldn't that be adequate for, for solar, or would you want it more than that?
Some would want it more for the purpose of make sure it's not reflecting straight into somebody's yard and stuff, because...
You said thirty-five, then it would give them a ten or fifteen feet for a bumper if they need it, then it's twenty without this.
That's what I assume is the intent is to...
So, you've gotta reword that, then?
Yeah, or just take out twenty feet.
Up, okay, up to thirty-five feet, is that what you're saying?
To have a depth of at least thirty-five feet.
At least thirty-five, yeah, right.
And what about re, rear yard?
And rear yard is twenty feet.
That would remain the same.
Yeah, the same thing rationale on that is that it's the rear yard and therefore, you don't have houses as close right there. At least that's my interpretation of that. Let's see.
Seven D?
Screening.
Seven D, E, F?
D, E, and F. I said there should be policies, the, I would be, I would say waivers should be policies. Screening should be in here. Abandonment or decommissioning, that should, should not be a policy, that needs to be in here as well.
What we can do with abandonment and reconditioning, what are towns doing on large sites? Because I've heard, not that it's existed, but there's a shelf life for the material of twenty, twenty-five years. So, you do a forty acre solar array, they suck the life out of it, lease, usually it's a lease, the ground lease with the landowner. The VC says to the landowner, well, you know, it's not producing, you're generating what it's supposed to. See you later, goodbye, we're not gonna renew our lease, then.
Isn't there a bond that they?
I've seen bylaws have the bond requirement. And, but points were taken. These haven't been in place long enough to see how well the bond really works.
True.
And if, and if it really does achieve the decommissioned purpose.
We only have that one out there toward Old County Road, do you know, EverSource one? That's, that's the biggest one that we've done, and I know that there was a bond on that.
Right, was that the, 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 yeah, the, the person might have a bond to protect the link, but it's, the problem is you get into a landowner and the clean, let's say the cleanup's two hundred thousand dollars, they're like, we can't afford to, you know, they walked away. That, that's, and then you, what do you end up with? You end up with a slowly...
No, typically, typically, communities' bylaws require a bond imposed with the community. And the community would have legal authority to then clean up if they had to. The question comes up is, is that bond forty years from now gonna be sufficient?
Yeah, with inflation and everything.
And...
No, I, I know, I know, yeah, they're twenty, twenty-five year leases, I've read them, and so it's...
Yeah, and if the bond's, if, if the bond is there and it's not updated on an annual or five-year period...
Who's policing it?
Right. And, and that becomes a big issue. And I also tell you that I think most often, people would say, all right, the applicant provide, engineer provides a removal cost estimate, and we have the review, et cetera. But who reviews it five years from now? And who pays for that review five years for recalculation? I think that has to be all addressed.
Are there any companies that, you know, has, take on this role, like, so, could there, do you know if there's any expert companies that can be commissioned to go in and say, this is the issue, this is what it's gonna cost? And put that into the bylaw that we can?
No, because I don't think they've been decommissioned.
No.
I think five or ten years, we're gonna be coming up on some of these things, those being decommissioned.
They haven't been decommissioned. And civil engineers and electric engineers could do a calculation of what it would take to remove and to restore the site.
But is that what's always gonna happen? And more likely, wouldn't you just replace the components that are needed and continue using it? I mean, I guess we don't know, but...
Yeah, we don't know. I would expect that's what's gonna happen. Because the interest in solar power is gonna grow. Now, twenty-five years from now, what's, what's gonna be the viable technology for that? I don't know. We're, we're gonna be seeing that with, with cell towers, for instance.
I guess you could think about it as any building, right? Let's say someone builds a warehouse or a factory, and over time, they decide that they don't want, want to use that factory anymore, right? And it starts to degrade and fall apart, right? We require a company to have some type of bond to, to raise the factory.
There, there's a bit different in that a building typically has a multiple reuse opportunities.
Oh, I see.
And typically, when they get financing, the bank will require that it have a reuse capability. I know many years ago, in Norton, Georgia, agents I worked for had a small business certified development company, and we were financing a bowling alley. And the SBA required as part of the certification for it, that we have an appraiser and expert explain how it could be reused. Because otherwise, they weren't gonna get issued a guarantee for it. So, it's not uncommon for a bank or financial institution to say, if you're gonna build the building, we wanna be sure it's something that can be reused. If it's a special purpose, that has a much higher rate and lower term than, and a higher share of capital that has been put into it versus bank financing. So, I think that's a different scenario. In case of cell towers, solar panels, those are special purpose, single purpose type facilities. And the, the concern is, hey, technology's changed, we don't need it anymore. Or regulations have changed, and therefore, we're not gonna use it, and we just walk away from it.
So, there's a, how do we solve it with the cell tower, for the cell tower?
Typically, cell towers require a decommission bond. But you're gonna have the same issue with that. How viable those bonds and how well can they be used? And are they sufficient to actually achieve their purpose? Where the tower or the solar generating facility is on leased land, I think is less of an issue than when the company actually owns the land. For instance, if someone has LLC, and let's say there's one twenty-three College Street, and somebody buys it, creates a one twenty-three College Street LLC, that's the only asset they own. They put solar panels on it. They walk away, they dissolve the LLC, who do you go after?
Right.
It's, it's, it's a real big issue with, with that.
Same thing with wind turbines, the, the big wind fields that are just like on the top of mountains and everything, what are they doing with those?
I assume they're doing the same thing.
Yeah.
And I think the expectation is, is not gonna be a problem because renewable energy is something gonna be here to stay. The concern I have is technology changes, and maybe the size of the panels don't need to be as big. We've seen that with cell, with cell towers. The number of cell towers is not as critical because when they get to five G and apparently they work on six, six G, that has a different mounting technology and, and the way they operate.
I think it's, I think it's a tough one because you want it as a failsafe. It's almost like you gotta rely on the property owner to kinda have, you know, to, and say, like, do the right thing. Because if you think about it, you could buy a house, you could live there for twenty-five years, you could pay your taxes, pay your mortgage. Then you can let the house go to nothing, you could walk away and stop paying the taxes. The town ends up taking it over, the house is the last payment, it's happening. And it happens. And then the town ends up taking it, eminent domain or whatever, clean it up, it becomes a burden on the town, on the town. I mean, I guess we kinda have to, because you put the bond in place, it's good for a certain amount of time, I agree with you. If the bond's five hundred thousand today, twenty-five years, what's it really gonna be?
That's where you have to have in your decision on it, in your bylaw, that gives the permanent entity authority to adjust it every five years or some, at some period, based upon a new engineer's assessment, what, what might, might be to cover that.
Yeah, that's, that last, the last section of his bylaw is about financial surety.
Right.
But, but I mean, you, you also don't wanna do something like you go and it's a debunked array, and it's not producing over a certain amount of time, that the town has the capability to put a lien on. Like I said, you put a lien on, and you end up taking possession of the property ultimately. Then you're putting the burden on the townspeople because you just bought to take possession of it, take possession of it, and then you gotta do it from there.
No, no, but if you do a bond that you can enforce in Massachusetts, then you can use those fines to do the removal, remediation, cleanup. And what isn't known is twenty-five years, thirty years down the road, is the remediation more than just removal and restoration of the vegetation? Is there some, uh, some has to be done in the soil. Expectations are not, but I'm not expert at that, I can't.
Um, in the, say, for instance, that EverSource one, I mean, in twenty-five or thirty years, aren't they just gonna replace the panels with something state-of-the-art, then? I, I don't think they're gonna walk away from that field.
They, they should, they should, I mean, we're playing a lot of what is.
Yeah, right.
We don't, like you said, the array panel could be, the standard could be a four by eight, and thirty years down the road, they could compress it into a two by three, and then they're putting three of those on the same stanchion, and we're getting three, you know, we don't...
The, the expectation on things is if it does reduce in size, the demand for electricity is gonna grow up and not down. That the, especially for renewable, and therefore, they're gonna be looking for, how can they generate more solar on the same plot of land?
Right.
As they are now. Now, can they, can they double their production by some change in technology and?
Now, how come, how come everything hit a, hit a brick wall here the last, like, five years? Prior to that, we were getting home, the home ones were, we have them like every other meeting, in-ground, and then...
Wasn't there, um...
But I mean, there was quite a few.
Wasn't there like a, a state, like a tax rebate?
Yeah, they changed some of the incentives on the personal side, and when the, the larger sides, they kinda, they were giving out grants or whatever the money, they kinda changed it. And it's funny, all those solar salespeople have gone to the cannabis world.
Well, yeah.
Because I've had them approach me personally, and then two, three years later, they call me, you know, the same thing, and I'm like, what are you selling? And it's like, we're cannabis, not solar. It's like the new... But it's, I think it's starting to try and come back.
Yeah, but, well, that's what's confusing. If, if the, if the direction is green, how come, how come it's leveled off so much here in, in recent years?
I don't know, I'm putting solar in the house, my house next week. So, I don't know.
Are they not coming to the planning board?
Well, there must be more...
Is your person coming to the planning board?
That's going on the roof.
No, his is on the roof.
Oh, it's because it's on the roof.
So, we haven't had any residential ground mount in a while.
They're maybe doing more roofing, not...
Probably.
But you're right, the last two years, even the residential, I've seen it decline. And the large solar, like I said, a lot, we're still doing large solar arrays, a lot of them like out east and up north, but in just general vicinity, I think there's only been a couple, and I don't know.
What was it, Amherst recently, they were, they were putting a moratorium on, on large scale. They, they had a big to-do over there about, they wanted more review and, and just put a moratorium so they could maybe rewrite the bylaw because they were afraid that's too many big ones coming and destroying the ecological...
You can do that. If you've got, if you need, see, need to revise your bylaw, you can put a short-term moratorium for the sole purpose of reviewing and revising the bylaw, so that you don't get inundated with projects that, under the old bylaw.
Right.
South Hadley won't have the problem because South Hadley has municipal light plant, and therefore, they're not, since it's not investor-owned, they're not under pressure to have solar, to the extent that EverSource is.
But in terms of this bylaw that we're working on to make the draft, can we do something along the lines of what you just suggested, Richard? Where it could be built in, that it has to be reviewed every five years and the bond could be adjusted?
And then we can put that into the financial security section of it, that it required a, you know, review by the permanent entity every five years to adjust the cost of bond, and the applicant is required to update, otherwise, they're in non-compliance. And what that means to most people is they'll take care of it. If you get a fly-by-night operation, they won't, but...
Now, are you including that now, or when to come back for?
I suggest we come, we do it next year.
Next year.
Because that's more substantive.
Yeah, all right, let's keep moving.
Okay, the item's seven dash sixty point eight. Again, regarding the minor and major, you know, you do there. Seventy point eight, seven, sixty point eight A, those should be in the policies and procedures.
That's why you, you crossed all them out, right? That's why you crossed all them out, right?
Seven dash sixty point eight A six, eight A six, eight A six. I scratched it out, but.
What number?
Yeah.
Seven point six.
Eight B are you from?
Yeah, no, eight A, procedures six. Says, "A special permit is also required, the planning board shall consolidate its site plan approval and special permit procedures." As I recall, special permit wasn't required. Therefore, you're not having a special permit on it. You're having a site plan review, not a special permit. So it's a bit confusing. And that's not on that thing we need to, probably scratch the special permit reference at this point. But then next year, if you revise it to acquire some special permits, some by right or site plan review, then we can put that back in.
Depending by the scale?
Yeah. Scale and its location. For instance, I would argue that if you've got an existing facility, building or paved area, that you're putting a large facility in and it's not altering the drainage and it doesn't have, and you've got proper screening, then that can be done by site plan review. If someone is posing in large scale, that's going to take vegetative site and change it into a large solar facility, then maybe a special permit would be appropriate. Especially if it's near residential or near, near your, sometimes of significance.
Well, how is that called out in here? That, those definitions?
They're not right now, really.
Yeah, yeah.
And then that's something we need to look at next year, I think.
Okay.
In rewriting this, I have some ideas what I want to do.
Yeah, yeah.
But that gets way beyond, I think we can reasonably do for article. Because I think that could become a problem at town meeting if you're then injecting some major changes. And I've tried to avoid major changes at this point in time.
Site plan approval though, for it would trigger your stormwater.
Site plan doesn't, but the one, the amount of disturbance triggers stormwater.
Yes.
If you're forty.
If you're, friends, if you've got.
Yeah, site plan has nothing to do with stormwater, right?
So, stormwater, they work hand in hand. But for instance, if you've got a two-acre area of pavement and you're going to put solar panels on it, typically that wouldn't trigger a stormwater permit because you're not changing one acre, not disturbing one acre site. It might trigger a site plan review, but not stormwater. I, we encountered this in South Hadley and we incorporated a stormwater view into those type of changes. We did that because a thing is UMass did a facility on a parking lot.
Yeah.
And thought everything's fine and they realized it changed, the panels changed the stormwater flow. And that created a stormwater problem. So, and we happened to have an engineer who was familiar with the project and told us about that. And so, okay, so what we want to do is we want to require a stormwater review even if you're on pavement because we want to be sure you're not changing stormwater flow.
Good point.
It doesn't, didn't change the quantity of stormwater, but changed the direction of flow of it.
So should it just be site plan approval with stormwater if it's not on the existing structure? I know what you're saying, I'm just sitting here like if I was an applicant. I think you probably would be, Dan, like I'm a little like.
No, well, what we would do is, what we'd put in there is, is cross-site plan review, but one of the conditions of, one of the requirements is that they demonstrate that it will not alter stormwater flow or that they will mitigate that. And therefore, to do that, they had to provide a stormwater report.
So how is this captured in here, I guess, the stormwater?
Well, he's saying we're going to do this next time, right?
It's not in here now.
Okay.
Because it's, the way it's done, it doesn't give that type of benefit for that. But by doing that, that's something that needs to be looked at.
Okay.
Because it, so I didn't realize it would actually occur, but it, it makes sense when somebody explained to me what happened.
So when we go back to do this next year, you have some notes somewhere.
I'm making notes for next year, yes.
Okay. Because I won't remember what we talked about next year.
I think it's possible when we're coming up to these things, we're going to talk about next year. We should just try and move through them.
Like flag it as.
Flag it and keep moving.
As something for next year. Or whatever that timing is.
Under seven dash sixty B, items three, four, seven, fifty. Some of those items seem more appropriate for a building permit, for instance.
Blueprints and drawings.
Blueprints and drawings. That's something I don't think a planning board needs to look at. But clearly the building commissioner does, building inspector. So I think when I put some of these into your policies and procedures, I'm going to take some of those out and leave them for the building inspector to take care of.
Yeah, right.
He's going to love it.
And.
He'll do it.
I'm assuming that your building commissioner follows the building code.
Yes. That's what I've been led to believe.
Coming to my life.
I wonder sometimes.
I'll put it this way, if a building commissioner is not putting into the zoning bylaws, not going to change that.
But I think, I want to try to push through it too, but I think the more streamlined, like if they come to the planning board, I just, this is what I think happens a lot of times. They go to the planning board and you go over the project, it's approved and the building commissioner doesn't get it or the drawings or some, they have information that's less. Like a perfect example, like personal experience, I did my subdivision, there's a subdivision back to back. I wasn't even done to give you my bond. The other guy, I don't even know where he was, he's cutting trees and going and someone goes, hey, you started your project? I'm like, what? You know, so it's kind of like there's that, in this small town, I feel like sometimes there's a disconnect. Because we all, like Paul's not full-time and, you know, everyone's like.
Full-time, I'm not even part.
You're doing your civic duty, so I'm just, not to overcomplicate, but I feel like it's.
I haven't drawn a check yet.
I know, I'm looking for retirement. But if they come to the planning board with pretty much everything that they need, it's like hard to copy for the building inspector, then they have what they need.
I agree, if they have to have these plans anyway generally, why not get a copy?
But I understand, typically they don't have them. You're not going to have blueprints, mechanical drawings prepared typically until you've got at least site plan approval because then you're going to pay the additional engineering costs to have those done.
So it'd be like SD drawing, I mean, design development drawing?
And if the planning board, let's say they submit blueprints, planning board approves the plans, who on the planning board is a certified building commissioner? Because what you're in effect doing is approving plans you don't have legal authority to approve. Because you don't have, they don't have the authority to approve a building plan.
No, the reason I brought it up is I watched the planning board in Westfield last night, or it was today from last night's meeting and they're going through for taking existing warehouse, adding on, doing a bunch of stuff, so it's in for site plan. And one of the questions, one of the board members is like where they, everything's online, they're like, where's the architectials? And I was like, ooh, that's kind of interesting. And the presenter didn't have it and found and was able, then they started going through the architectials to see how it matches, just an example, like matching existing building. It's a little bit more in-depth, we don't deal with that as much in town. But there was a set of architectials that were stamped, they were included with the site plan. Because I would have thought same thing, like you come in, you don't necessarily need that. I think in a solar array, it just, you can ask for everything in waiver. The planning board can, if it's not, you know, or they can ask for a waiver. But I think we should try to get a little, capture a little bit more because it would help out on the building side.
So the problem you have is, they submit them and then the planning board approves. They go, building commissioner reviews and says, these sheets don't meet the building code requirements. The planning board's already approved it.
Can we do it in steps though? Because I agree with what you're saying, there might be somebody on the planning board in the future who is actually qualified to look at that. Could you then say, did you go to the building inspector first?
No, because that's a chickney question.
You have to come, because my thought is like, so, so I come in with a solar array, I present it. You're going to ask me for a sheet of what the panel or, you know, you're like, what's this look like? Well, no, I have it sketched out, they're no taller than 15 feet. And you know, if you're at that point going in for site plan, you've got your panel chose, your stand, you know, what have you, it's going to be ground mounted, it's going to be drilled in and how it's going to be. But they're kind of along that way, maybe it doesn't need to be stand, but you need to have it provided. Because if I was a board member and someone came, I would want to kind of see the nuts. To me, that's the nuts and bolts side of it, not just a stormwater with 12 acres and whatever. You kind of want to have a visual.
The technical stuff?
A little, not, I mean, not, you want to know how much it's going to produce, but you want to kind of see, you don't know. I mean, the panels.
I think you want to see, you want to see visual representation, it's going to look like. But I don't think you want to see the blueprints for permitting of the, of a building permit for it. For instance, if I'm looking at a warehouse addition.
Right now, those would be great to you and I.
What I'd want to look at is not.
You and I wouldn't.
The quote-unquote architectural details. I want to see the rendering of it, I want to see how they visually fit in. But I don't want to see the details of the interior lighting, I don't want to see the details of the interior plumbing. I don't want to see those type of details.
Right.
That, that's not relevant. What's relevant is the visual image of it.
But a solar array is like an external object, it's not like.
Yes, it's all external.
That's what I'm thinking, just a little bit, I mean, maybe we could ask that we have a rendering of the layout or how it is.
Including their screening and how their approach to that, that's all.
A lot of that, for the ground mount that we did, everyone of the residential produced that about what they were going to look like and renderings of, that was done by their solar company that took a picture of the backyard or whatever, yeah.
I mean, you just want to protect yourself, someone comes in with a 58 parcel in China and you don't have to provide it.
Can we put in there, provide it on request? You can't do that.
If you request it one time, you need to request it every time.
Yes.
You don't want to get in a situation that this gentleman comes in and because he knows Paul, we don't need it. She comes in, Paul doesn't know her and he says, oh, you've got to have this. You need to be consistent in your application of bylaw. And that's reasoning with granting waivers. You need to make findings on waiver as to why you're granting the waiver and how it's consistent with the purpose of the bylaw. And they don't just re- waive it, you've got to make findings for those. Well, you should.
Okay. We will from here. Oh, dear.
Just trying to keep you out of litigation.
I know, you're a plethora of information, believe me. You brought a lot to my attention in the short time I've known you.
Okay, the.
So where do we stand on that?
We want.
Do we take, do we take notes to?
Take notes what we're going to do for next year revisions.
Okay, so for right now, things like the blueprints or drawings, are we leaving that?
I would take that out.
Okay, I just didn't know we came to a conclusion.
I would.
No, he's recommending both three, four, seven, fifteen, seventeen, nineteen be taken out, right?
Yeah, and that whole section you put into your policies and procedures. I think as much of the application content as possible should be in the policy procedures. So you can change it as deemed necessary. You don't have to go to town meeting every time you want to modify an application requirement.
You can, yeah, you can amend it.
Yeah, you want to do it in your policy procedures, you can do it, you can amend it yourself.
Okay, so Richard, will you have a final policies and procedures, you know, taking up some of these things that may not be captured in that for us to review?
Yes. And on page seven. Seven dash sixty point eight B nineteen. I'm not sure I fully understand. Evidence has been given, the planning board that the utility company that operates the electric grid where the installation is to be located, has informed of the solar electric installation intent to install and not receivables such notification, off-grid system shall be exempt from this requirement. I think it's a bit lengthy and I think what you want to do is say, the utility that's buying the electricity is going to, has been notified. Is that what you're basically saying? And I think it's, basically say something like that, it's, it can be a lot shorter.
Yeah.
That was put in there to confuse you.
Well, I'm easily confused.
I think John Furman put it.
Who wrote that, I was going to say, he wrote this.
Actually.
Did you know?
I'm trying to think.
I think it was.
Yeah, you've got to get the approval of the electrical authority for the interconnection.
You know, you might be right because I don't think Larry, Larry was still working for PVPC at the time. So I think maybe we wing this one. We did have some people from Westfield come in.
I know, when I did the cell tower bylaw in South Hadley, I winged it and I winged it with the idea of making it as strict as possible so that we could get the cell tower company's attention and we did. And then before we adopted it, we had an initial hearing like that. Three of their, three companies sent their attorneys, two sent their engineering representatives. And then they and I had a couple of very productive meetings that resulted in revised proposal that.
So you got free work out of it?
They got some of what they wanted, but we basically got what we really thought was needed and they were supportive of it. So it worked well.
I thought they were going to come and shoot you in the balls.
No, they, and the fact that they participate in that way, they basically eliminated them from, found any appeal of the bylaw being unreasonable because they couldn't say they weren't involved.
You have to make it somewhat, not as fractious, but reasonable. Because like you said, we're coming into more need for electricity, it's going to grow. This is, you know, this is probably going to pick back up.
Actually, I think John got this from a different community and we kind of.
Massaged it in.
Tweaked it as best we could without knowing a lot of what we were doing.
And a lot of people do things like that, a lot of bylaws. And I've always told people, before you tweak a bylaw, look at the bylaw, the community you're taking it from and understand that community. They do that with accessory apartments a lot. Well, if you take the accessory apartment bylaw from Amherst, without understanding Amherst zoning regulations for housing, you realize, no, 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 it really doesn't fit your community.
Yes.
So you really have to understand that.
Now, it's all coming back to me, I think this came from Palmer. It was like a, someone.
I think we know what they're trying, we know what they're trying to say.
Right.
So, we're cleaning up that English, right?
All right.
Okay, eight C on page eight. Dimension height requirements, I think though, there needs to be a section on dimension height requirements for all that then differentiates between small, medium, large facilities so that there's that type of. And I, basically what's in. And I, basically what's in here, I can do that without making substantive changes. 8E. One, two, and three. Yeah. I think 8E, one, two, and three should be applicable to all, not just to large. I mean, you want, you want them consistent, you don't want them shot, I don't care if they're on residential, small or a large, you don't want them shining someone else impacting and joining neighbor.
How do you, how do you, how do you decide that it's going to do that? I'm just.
Again, you require the lighting for them to be pointed down. Whether it's lighting for residential, lighting for commercial operation.
We're going to have to do that on residential, right there. They didn't do, did they do that?
Well, they knew the slope of the roof, my roof.
Then on the roof, they're not going to have lighting, but they, if they did on the ground, they might.
Yeah.
Most residential wouldn't have lighting, but some.
Why would I put a light on my roof for solar?
Yeah.
Right?
Yeah, not going to have it there.
Yeah.
And 8E four, change roads, driveway, accessway or access drive is not a road.
Right way.
Yeah. And 8E seven.
Seven, I didn't see that, do you?
There's not 8E seven.
There's like a numbering, it goes E, one, two, three, one, one, two. I think that roads have to be tabbed in and the numbers would get corrected. So is seven, impact on agricultural and environmentally sensitive land?
Where are you, on page eight?
I'm on page nine now.
Under which number?
I guess I'm confused about the formatting. E, and then it goes one, two, three, and then one, one.
E, one, two, three, oh, yeah, I see what you're saying.
I think it's a format.
On the next page.
Yeah. And then it goes down to F, that one shouldn't be tabbed out.
Eight is.
Design and performance standards of roads, right? So that would be four.
I, I thought so.
And then that would be like four.
What, four is screening, five is screening? Is that how it's written?
I'm looking at E is design and performance standards, and then like three is utility connections. And then I think four should be roads, five should be vegetation management.
Yeah. Yeah, there, that should have been, yeah, there should have been four.
Yeah, E, one, two, three, four.
Yeah. Sometimes when there's auto fill, I don't catch them all.
Yeah, no, that's fine. I just think that that's where the seven comes from.
Yeah.
My daughter said they were the best cookies she's had, so. She said you raised the bar.
I think the.
People won't really want to know about this.
You're wondering when you're going to open your shop.
I don't think anyone's watching.
Are you kidding me? I'm getting texts.
They want your recipe?
No.
I think the items impacting agricultural and since, and environmentally sensitive land and screening, I think there should be a separate item, the separate section of that applicable. I think that's why I was getting with my comment that. Should be a general section on dimensional standards that you're doing that. Screening required, and you've got the number on 50% of the total land area may be occupied by the solar panels. And there should be a separate section, not under roads, not under, it should be a design standard, dimensional design and performance standard, but it shouldn't be.
Yeah.
A subcategory.
Yeah, that.
What's the word, like non-indent it?
Yeah. Yeah, that's right. I think more attention should be drawn to that, no more than 50% requirement. That's kind of a big.
Yeah, it is, and it gets buried under there and it shouldn't, it, it needs to be brought out.
Yeah, I agree.
And same with screening. Some things I just think need to be brought out more.
Yep, agreed.
8F.
Safety and environmental. Use of owner or operator.
Yeah. Yeah, it says, the owner or operator shall provide copy. I think you need to have one party responsible, so that nobody can point fingers at each other. It's kind of like if you, in subdivision regulations, if you were to say, the developer or the contractor.
Right.
They'd be pointing fingers at each other, saying, well, I thought they were doing, they thought, no. You hold one party responsible, make it the owner.
Yep.
And be done with it.
Mm-hmm.
And if they, they hire somebody to operate it, they contract somebody to operate it, doesn't matter, the owner's responsible.
I agree.
8F two.
It says owner and operator, and there's spots in that section as well, so. To the last sentence, so.
What do you, now you're on what, land clearing, soil erosion?
Yes.
Second sentence on the slope should be a separate item.
Yes. Again, this gets into dimensional standards.
No, 15%, greater than 15%?
No, should not occur in slopes greater than 15%. No more than 50% of land shall be, shall contain land requiring clearing of force. You want to draw attention to those standards and not bury them somewhere.
Yeah, there's along with the other impacts on agricultural, environmental sensitivity, that 50, other 50%.
18, endowment. Is that where you're at? Leaving, again, leaving 50% of the.
Yeah, F two. Same thing there. Then 8G.
Can I ask you a question about abandonment? The word, the concept is, reach the end of its useful life. Who defines useful life? And I'm just asking because I'm wondering if somebody said, well, no, there's still more life in this, you know?
It says earlier on in the bylaw, if it hasn't been utilized or produced power for a year. Maybe we want to bring that up again.
Yeah, I just wonder if we do, because I think that's very subjective useful life.
Maybe we want to carry that sentence about if it hasn't generated power in a year.
Well, okay, so hypothetically speaking, like power plants, they have like their peak generation, right? And they only turn them on when they need them. Theoretically, they could have solar fields that they only use or utilize when they need it. They totally undo something. One, I guess, how would we know if they're using them or not? I guess it's maintained.
That's a good question, how would we know if they're used?
Yeah, it's true, maintained.
That's, that's the part we care about.
I guess, yeah.
You.
Yeah, the sun's hitting it.
Presumably your assessor's going to know.
Can you utter off like?
Presum, presumably your tax assessor's going to know. Because then, if they're not generating electricity from, they're going to be going to the assessor requesting a reduction in personal profit tax, or however they tax it. I would expect them to do that. If, for instance, a cell tower, if you've got a cell tower up and they're not operating, they're not generating revenue off of it.
Yeah.
They're going to be looking for some type of reduction, so they don't pay as much ta, as much taxes.
What if they don't? We've got people in town that could get reduced taxes for this, or that, and they don't.
And, and big, big issue would be like ever source, for instance, that they could be an issue. But I would expect they would be, they would be seeking a reduction, because it's not benefiting to them at all.
There's no way for a human being, like somebody just suggested you could go with them for the hung. Is there any other way to, I know.
I have no way. How you would tell if they're.
Where you get this suggestion from? Does she have like a thing in her ear? She gets the ideas from?
Light and stench and pull it in, see.
I can handle that, I'm not an engineer, but I can go out and listen.
What if you don't have, you're going to hear it?
I guess you could require them to put an outlet there that you can plug.
She didn't get charged her phone.
I think if you just put it in, then they have to maintain or produce, like, it's kind of like you're policing, they have to police themselves.
Yeah.
It's like, you know.
No, I, but I see, I agree with your point. I mean, Northeast Utilities used to own a building in South Hadley that was practically nothing. And it was, in my opinion, way over assessed. They never challenged the assessment. Why? Well, when you bought the building from them, you found out what they were doing is they were including the building at the assessed value as part of their collateral for the operating loans. So maybe it counted for one one hundredth of one percent. It wasn't worth their, their effort to challenge the assessment. They're, they're probably getting more money through the operating capital than they were paying taxes.
Okay, let's keep moving.
Make it through this section, it's going to.
Okay.
Were you, did you do eight?
Yeah.
Seven sixty eight two, or no?
That, that should be eight, F two.
F two?
Yeah.
All right.
On to you. And then V is seven dash sixty point eight GH and I. Again, I think that should be generally applicable sections that apply to all cell tower, all solar facilities.
Still one of the B with the question mark is what? On page 11, here's a question mark.
Where's?
Which part, Dan?
Uh, so general comments, questions for updating seventy sixty, oh, this is yours. This is the question mark. I guess these are, these are your notes.
No, those are my questions.
Yeah.
I think.
We hit the end, that's what happened.
I think GH and I should be sections that apply to all solar facilities. I has a use.
I see what you mean again, owner, operator, applicant.
Yeah, you need to use one term for all of it.
And proponents, proponents?
Say have one party responsible. Can't have people pointing fingers at each other.
Owner?
And I would say owner.
Yeah, owner.
Seventy sixty.
And then.
Seven sixty eight I three.
Yeah. It caps 125%.
Sure, sure.
Yeah. It, I put 12%, it caps at 125% of the cost of removal.
Is that built in for inflation?
I don't see any reason to cap it at 125%. I think the cost, it needs to be based on cost estimate for removal. And then the board needs to use their judgment as to administrative costs. It may be that with inflation, you make it 50% or maybe not. If you're going to have to have legal counsel to enforce it, which you will.
Pay for that too.
It needs to pay for that.
So what are you suggesting on that? Nope.
I don't believe it should be limited to 125%. I don't, be turned to be reasonable by the planning board to cover the cost of removal and compliance with additional requirements that forth.
Mm-hmm.
And that's it.
Yeah.
Just. I've seen before where people will put a cap on what.
Yeah, it's a constraint, it doesn't need to be.
No.
Is that it?
For that, yes.
For solar. Let's see if we can continue on with.
Plan, business, and industrial.
Is, is it one page?
Yes.
Really?
Very short. My first comment is that I think we could do plan, business, industrial as one section.
You know, I, I was thinking along those same lines, you said, what the hell's the difference between the two?
There's some slight differences, but I think.
But can you combine them?
I think we can combine them and make it a planned development with subsections for business industrial.
Yeah.
So, so there's a general, things that generally applicable to all planned developments.
Yeah.
And then something unique, business and unique industrial. And I think it makes it more simple.
I like that, don't you? And then he, as he said, do you make subsections in it?
Yeah, you can make some.
So it'll be section seven ninety and you'll eliminate 100 or something like that, or?
Yes. And.
What are your questions?
Yeah, first question is, what is the purpose that you're trying to achieve with planned business development? Why does the objective?
Economic.
Okay.
Isn't that what most of them are, an economic location based? And so you're trying to economic development?
Where has the planned business development been used at in?
In towns?
Yes.
Nowhere.
Nowhere, okay.
Well, not, nothing planned, I mean, no, we've got, we've got, we've got industrial sections and, you know, your business is all just commercial highway and resident, some village business, but there's no industrial park.
So the, the desire is trying to encourage use of this approach, okay?
Planned business development.
Okay. And then one B.
Isn't any land to pull it off on, is there?
Right, that's the.
Properly right now. Or, yeah, there is a little bit. Up on Valley, right?
One B, and that's two separate items.
I just sent a link to your email with those two.
And first item is site plan shall be submit, presented from the entire track. And then we're a conscious subdivision, it's subdivision, that that's two separate items, they don't need to be combined into one.
Yeah.
The thing, it makes it confusing when you combine it. And uses shall be contained in one continuous building. Why is there a desire to have, contain one continuous building?
This, this has got to be a real old bylaw.
I think it is.
Really old.
Yeah.
You know.
I.
Is it outdated, is this to the point where?
Yeah, I think it is. I think it's, it's very, I think, especially this, this line is very.
Because one continuous building, then you're triggering that coverage of the parcel of like. And it's like, you know what I'm saying, the planned business development, and you're talking about, we've limited, we've gone through it before already, the, the amount of coverage you can have per acre.
And one continuous building really limits your architectural and site design capability.
Right.
It may be that what you really want for a planned business development is a road we brought in that has five or six buildings in the five to 10,000 square foot range, and not one continuous building.
Mm-hmm.
Because it makes it more marketable, more viable.
Maximize your tenants, yeah.
Right. Because the days that you try to get a single tenant in a big building, I think a larger gone, if you can avoid it.
Mm-hmm. Especially with remote.
Okay, so you would agree that we don't want to have contained in one continuous building? Not shall, it may be contained, but it doesn't have to be contained that way.
I don't think you have to say anything, right?
Yeah, and let's see, the reference to. Oh. The designated leaching field area. The designated leaching fi- area under G for on lot, on site, on not, sector systems meets with the requirements of, then just needs to meet with the, um, conform to the Board of Health and applicable state regulations. And leave it that. Let the Board of Health handle that and not get into those. So that takes us to an industrial development. Again, I'm going to combine these into one section. Yeah, uh. My suggestion is that the purpose B is to encourage planned industrial, business and industrial development by providing development incentives for such developments when undertaken in accordance with this section and then identify the relief that is available. Because this provides some relief, as I understand it, as well. And you want to make that the purpose, is to, uh, encourage planned business industrial development. So it's not haphazard. And then, let's see, one B. Site plan should be.
Section ten of the old bylaws, you mean, yeah?
I think so.
Mm-hmm.
Again, B, I think, should end afterward, planning board. Site plan shall be presented for the entire tract as outlined in, uh, uh, the site plan review section, and shall be subject to approval by the planning board, period.
Period.
And then another item, where a subdivision opposed, it must conform to Southampton, uh, subdivision, uh, regulations. And then C. I think there needs to be a subsection of, uh, relief or waivers that may be granted. And maybe reduction in lot size. Are there real incentives you're providing?
Yes.
And this does make provision for open space. One D, the total number of lots in the development shall, shall not exceed the number of lots which could be developed under normal application where relief is granted in lot size requirements.
That's, that's very confusing.
Yeah. I think that, that's a condition of granting relief on lot size requirements, is that you're not building, creating more lots than you could otherwise. And then they're trying to get open space in here.
Yeah.
And also, are you gonna question E as well, or, you know, the permitted uses shall be limited to manufacturing or service industrial uses?
Right.
Yeah.
That's a little bit too narrow, isn't it?
I would think so.
Why do you want to, you should broaden that.
It should be limited to whatever uses allowed in the underlying zoning.
We, we went through those uses like two years ago, that. Like, uh, the wearin'.
Mm-hmm.
Maybe.
So how is it gonna read now?
The permitted uses shall be as allowed with, under the underlying zoning.
In the zo- you know, on the table of uses and the.
Oh, on the table of uses, okay.
Yeah, so hypothetically, if you had that in, then had those uses, but then in the tables and uses, you had, you, you list three, let's say, and you had twenty, like, then what happens if it was written that way?
This would govern.
That would govern, not the tables.
Because it's more specific. If somebody came in under section seven, and that's maybe why some, nobody's thought to use it, is because coming into here and requesting relief from lot size, they're limiting their use, use opportunities. Okay. G.
G?
G, at least ten percent of the tract area, oh, which at least eighty percent shall not be written, yeah. Okay. I, I think what's intended is, one, there has to be open space. That, that has to be at least ten percent of the total tract area. The open space must have the following characteristics. No, uh, at least eighty percent shall not be wetland, or land which is subject with, with a slope over ten percent. And then open space must be conveyed to the town and accepted by o- offices, or conveyed to nonprofit corporation. So I think that's, and then I think, so it needs to be a subsection on o- the open space requirement, and it needs to be more structured, and not one long, long sentence.
All right.
Agreed.
I guess my question would be the.
All that wording about the trust and stuff going on, is that a little bit too much pollution?
I think it is. Um, I think the intent is that it be open space that be, uh, de-restricted to be kept in open space in perpetuity. And how that gets done should be more flexible and not, not specifying in here. And, and, uh, because there may be a land trust that wants to take it over, or maybe that that is a park that the town would like to have, and the developer's willing to give it to the town as a park. The objective is to have open space preserved, uh, that's at least ten percent of, of the tract. And I, I'll also note that I think one thing that has to be done is the open space needs to be in a contiguous tract. It can't be. Okay, you got a fifteen acre tract here, and we're gonna do a fifteen thousand square foot open space this area, twenty thousand over here, ten thousand here, and they're not connected, but they add up to ten percent. That's, that doesn't, that doesn't achieve the objective.
Right.
What, what happens in this kind of circumstance if the town votes a zoning change? You know, it's an industrially, um, zoned area. And then comes the town, and you certainly see some, uh, attempts to change zoning in our town for, sometimes good reasons. How does that affect this kind of a bylaw in terms of these criteria that we're putting in there?
A development that's already been done i- is largely protected from those changes. So if I've already, uh, got approval and constructed a subdivision, for instance, there's a protection of, I think it's eight years, no. It's eight years from zone changes. I think it's three years for A and R, and it's, it's eight years for defendant. But the reality is, once they've done that, you really can't start changing the zoning law. Uh, that they're grandfathered, their pre-existing uses, and just accept them. What oftentimes people try to do is change zoning before a development gets approved. And that's where you always end up in court.
What do you, what do you, like, what do you, what's your?
I was thinking, um, I'm thinking of the city west of, because that's my hometown, and they, and I read this thing about how things on the north side of the river was all gonna be industrial, this was going back a number of years, but then a lot of residences got built in there, maybe grandfathered in. Maybe I'm going off on a tangent, but I just wonder how the zoning bylaws can change, um, and usage and, uh, regards, something like open space, et cetera. Maybe I'm kind of going off on a crazy direction, but. What if they, what if, if something's industrial in our town, and then some effort is made to say, well, let's turn this into residential.
Yeah, you have to go for a zone change.
And you went for a zone change, but in the meantime, it affected bylaws that had guidelines like these written.
Once you go for a zone change, and if you went from industrial to residential, then you're following the, the rule and reg.
Yeah.
The residential. If you go for that change, the industrial's, you change it from one to the other.
And if they've already built industrial there, then industrial would be considered pre-existing non-conforming.
I see, okay, well, that's.
Which they can continue to use as long as it doesn't meet a criteria for abandonment. For instance.
That's two or three years.
Some places, it's twelve months, some places it's two years.
Is, is this timeframe built into these zoning bylaws that we're reviewing?
There's a pre-existing non-conforming in there now, yeah.
Okay, all right.
And it also gets into, if it's pre-existing non-conforming and you want to expand it, then there's a special permit process for expansion, alteration.
Yeah, because. We don't have, the thing is, we don't have enough industrial, like, other towns do, industrial and business, commercial highway, you know, and a lot of it's pretty much spoken for, it's not.
And if you create a overlay district, that doesn't have any impact on the underlying zoning. For instance, if you created a forty yard district, uh, for residential development, and you had an industrial district underlying it, that overlay district has no impact. It, uh, overlay district, that is a opt-in type dis- district, where a developer could choose to use it, or choose not to use it. If you have floodplain district, that's not opt-in, that's a mandatory overlay district, and that does have impact.
You good with that, then, that section, or?
Yes.
I'd like to keep moving here. We can get into home occupations. Or, uh, yeah, wait a minute, where's that radioactive?
That's next.
Seven one forty? Yeah, let's, let's do seven one forty, because I think we can do this one in about thirty seconds.
So you want to just scrap, scrap that altogether?
Yeah, it says not allowed.
What you're suggesting on that? Does, do we need anything like that?
I don't see why you need it. Um, I talked to Larry about it, he said that years and years ago, there was community that did this, and.
Once again, very old.
Yeah. And my, uh, one thing, and read it, you can't really tell exactly what it's saying, and two, do you really want to allow radioactive waste facilities? It kind of seems contrary to the rest of your bylaws.
Yeah, just.
Scrap that, everybody?
Wouldn't, don't you want to say that they're just not permissible?
What?
Don't you want to say we don't permit radioactive waste facilities in our town?
Yeah.
I think by not having it, it's created a.
Right.
By not having it.
Yeah.
By not, specifying it's allowed, then it's not allowed.
Cool.
So, is everybody in agreement, we should scratch that at this stage?
Yeah. I don't think too many towns people complain.
Told you it would only take thirty seconds.
You never know, though.
Home occupations, this sounds, this sounds interesting.
What section?
The, uh, seven one thirty, home occupations.
Thirty, okay.
Okay, first item is, it use, says, use of drilling in any R district. I understand what you mean by any R district, but we need to spell out the residential district you're referring to.
Yeah.
And I assume you mean R, R, RN, and RV.
Mm-hmm.
Non-resident, I'm pretty good, I think I understand what you mean by that as well, but in this day and age, the term non-resident tends to connote a different meaning than what you're intending. I think what you're referring to is any person who doesn't reside in the home. Non-resident, some, oftentimes nowadays, means somebody's not in the United States on, by, um, legal purposes.
Well, wouldn't the easier way to be, is got to be owner occupied? Not necessarily?
No, what I'm trying to say is that no more than one person who doesn't reside in the home is allowed to work.
Say you have, like, one employee.
You know, if one employee doesn't reside there, that's it.
Should they full-time employee or something?
No, I, I think.
Can they reside somewhere else in town?
Yeah, they can reside anywhere, but.
I know that, but I, to the definition.
The, uh, yeah, the, the intent of a home occupation is that it won't look any different from a regular house.
Yeah.
Right. And so therefore, you don't have situation where.
I can't start a business in my garage?
You can start a business in garage, but you can't have a situation where, you know, twenty people come there, they're working there.
The situation I was just thinking of is like home health aides or things of that scenario, right? If someone needs, needs multiple people to care for them.
Right.
What's the wording you want to change that to?
Yeah, but that's.
No more than one, one person not residing in residence.
One person not residing in the residence, maybe in four.
He was talking about his home occupation, so, uh, home occupation, the interpretation is me is, is, uh, I work for the Boston Globe, and I work from home, I write articles, I do whatever, obviously that's a farce. But the home health aide that would come in and works for you
Right.
is, is a care which, they're not an employee, you're not a.
That's not a home occupation.
They're an employee.
Well, that's not true. Sometimes you are privately employing one.
But, but they're not, they're not conducting a business out of your home.
They're providing a service.
They're providing a service to you as the resident.
Their business location is some other facility.
The, the issue run into sometimes with this is, for instance, contractors.
Oh.
Contractors are part of the largest single home occupation that I can think of. And very legitimately, ninety-nine percent of all they do is they maintain their mounting address at the home, and their, uh, building records, employment records, and contracts. They answer phone calls, but they don't do any real business at the home other than that. But, under the subcategory of contractors, you also have landscape contractors. And dealt with one, one time, he was a really nice guy. I, I loved the guy and his wife, they're really great people. But every morning, he would have his fifteen crew members show up at his house so they worked out their assignments. So the neighbors complained because you'd have, every morning, eight to ten vehicles over here, you had all the equipment that he was storing in his garage as well, and that was disrupting the residents. So now, you can operate your business there, but you can't operate, have employees come in there.
The day-to-day.
Yeah. You know, operate your, your bookkeeping stuff, that's fine, that's, that's not issue, but don't have your employees come there. So the issue come into with home occupation is, all right, they only have one employee. Only one person who doesn't reside in the home may work in the business in the home. You want, don't want to exclude somebody from having, for instance, I'm operating a real estate business at my home. I've got ten agents. They don't come to, to my home, but I employ them and they work out of their homes. That's, or they, they work out of their cars, wherever, but you don't want them working out of my home. You want, you want to restrict the, not, not people that come to the residence.
So are you saying we should reword that, that no more than one non-resident shall be?
No more than one person not residing in the home may work for, in, in business in, at the home.
Okay.
But does that mean if five reside in the home, they can all work there?
Not more than one person who does not reside in the home.
Right, so.
But, but yes, but yes. If I've got a family of ten people, I've got a large family, let's say, and all, and all ten of them are working in the business, that's fine. They're all working in the home, that'll live in the home, that's fine, but if. But if they're not living there, only one person. And the.
Who's going to police that?
Our code enforcement officer, of course.
Cindy. You used the example of somebody that had their staff meetings early on, 10 cars showed up, the neighbors didn't.
It's when they get called by the.
That's something. What about somebody that carpools and, you know, there is eight people in there, but there's only two cars maybe driving.
It's the building inspector's, the zoning enforcement's duty.
Yes, and the reality is.
The neighbor's eyes and ears.
Unfortunately.
The reality is, it occurs from neighbors' complaints. That's the reality of it. And I will tell you that I would suspect that vast majority of home occupations operate illegally. Vast majority of them don't create any problems, and nobody ever complains. But when they do, you want to have bylaw that you can actually apply to them.
Well, especially the way the world has changed now.
That's right, yeah.
Yeah.
For a year.
Homeworking people, and that's going to continue.
And the reality is, you need to have your bylaws, if your residential, if your community is largely residential based.
Yeah.
And you want to have your community stable.
Yes.
Be a strong residential market down the road, you need to accommodate this type of use.
Yeah, this is actually makes a lot of sense to me, right?
This is going to be growing, I mean.
Mostly residential, and those people, we may want to allow them to have more people work out of their homes.
People are going to want to be able to work out of the home and they want to have high-speed broadband. Those are two things that a residential, a larger residential community really needs to develop and have in place. Because that's going to be important for your economic stability.
So do we like this, where there's only one non-residing person?
I think you start getting into, oh, suddenly you're going to open a can of oranges. And then, you know, what's the multiplier, like, one isn't really two, if it's three.
I get you, yeah.
Because if you go more than that, then you're talking of parking and cars.
And that's where it usually comes into, is that.
What comes into?
Cars.
Yeah, they don't give their traffic.
Some, I know we've looked at different bylaws and we opted one that, one of the standards is that it can't generate more traffic than the customer to be involved with the residential use.
What's your next one there, net floor area?
Yeah, how's net floor area to be calculated? I would not use net floor area. I would just say not more than 25% of the floor area. Because what you can do is use the assessor's field cards, which typically have the interior square footage. And that can, and done in the net floor area because what, net means you're deducting something.
Yeah, I think that's fine.
Just say.
Not more than 25% of the existing.
Existing floor area.
And you're going to keep in not to exceed 400 square feet, or is that?
That's in your existing bylaw, I don't see reason to change it, I mean, that's.
Alright. Next.
And, let's see, 131E.
It could be like clergy person, salesperson.
Right. His occupation, no, their occupation. Stuff like that, it need to be gender neutral. Yeah. In any way may become objectionable or detrimental. That's a very vague standard. Because Cindy's hair salon business was perfect for everybody, until she went up on the price and then people found it objectionable.
But seriously. Yeah, I get you.
You're going to get some more text messages about that.
I happen to know an example here in our town of somebody that was a seamstress. And.
She's still in business?
Pardon me?
Is she still in business?
You looking for?
She is still in business, but she moved out of town. Because her clientele came by, and sometimes it was a wedding party. And guess what? Three or four bridesmaids came in different cars and everything, and the neighbors didn't like that, you know? So, she's a great person, a good.
So that's one reason, what you can do is have a more clear standard, that no more than one client visit at the same time. Or no one to at the same time. Something or no client visits. What we developed was a by right and by site plan review home occupation classes. By right meant they had no clientele coming by. I call that the contractor classification. Because they wouldn't have anybody come by and they gave them opportunity to operate without any problem at all. Then you have those that, well, if they have a clientele come by, we want to be sure there's not too much traffic and be sure that they have sufficient parking. So I said you got to do site plan review.
That makes sense.
That's the hairdresser.
Yeah.
Type.
But this only applies to a multi-family dwelling. Right? And so what if it's a single-family dwelling, but?
I think it should be applied in all.
The dwelling really doesn't make.
Whether it's a multi-family or single-family shouldn't matter.
So we should take up the multi-family.
But I would, I would, so have you got additions to make to this from what your experience is that aren't already here, because this thing was written a long time ago too?
That's something, I would go with what we have now. And then next year, we'll split that up into two classifications.
Alright, because there's nothing that says anything about parking and like you say, the other occupation where you don't want more than one person, I don't know, per hour, or more, I don't know. Any other criteria that might.
I think we can incorporate into I, no home occupation which requires a sign, visits by clientele that require additional parking, or in any, and not that would be, we can construe that as being detrimental if it requires more parking, for instance. So, if you did that.
Wasn't someone.
Site plan review because we didn't, if you just said, oh, it can require more parking, we knew what people would do. Oh, they're parking the grass.
Right.
Well, that's our parking area, no, no. We require site plan review so they can identify where the parking is.
Wasn't someone running a gymnasium out of their house?
Tried it already.
I'm joking.
It was a membership.
Okay, can we, can we tackle signs, or is it going to be too long, you think, given the time? I'm sorry, sir.
That's okay, home occupations on H. So it says such use, it says clinics, barber shops, bakeries, all these shall not be considered as home occupations. So that means that a barber shop isn't a home occupation and isn't allowed?
Correct.
In a home, okay.
Oh, I interpreted the other way.
No.
They're not constrained by this.
Tourist homes, we had talked a while ago about Airbnb.
Yes, yes, that's where Airbnb comes in.
I assume that's what that is, right?
No.
Bed and breakfast, isn't that a word for that?
Bed and breakfast, yeah.
Airbnb is simply a platform that people use to rent out their homes.
Oh, no, yeah, I know, I know that. I just mean that what tourist home, that's what that's referring to.
Tourist homes refer to bed and breakfast homes, essentially.
Okay, so wait, 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 wait. So what is an Airbnb, it's not?
Airbnb is not a use, Airbnb is a, one of the multiple platforms people use to rent out their homes, or portion of their homes.
But this is basically saying that those aren't home occupations. So a tourist home is not a home occupation, so a tourist home is not allowed.
As a, right. Unless you, unless in your table use schedule, you specifically allow a tourist home or bed and breakfast.
Yeah, and B and Bs are allowed, you know, they are in the table of uses, so.
Right, so they can't come in as a home occupation, they had to come into that classification.
Okay, alright, thank you.
And I said what I did about Airbnb because people will say, well, we need to regulate Airbnbs. What I need to regulate is temporary occupancy of residences and bed and breakfast.
Short-term rental.
Short-term rentals, for instance. Because there's about three or four different platforms people use to rent out either rooms or their whole house. And they, I guess it depends on which platform they find more useful. Some use all of them. And what I've seen is the lack of regulation has driven out some legally operating bed and breakfast. People that actually complied with all the regulations. And then they're being undercut by people who didn't, but they were using on, on the internet platforms to rent out their rooms.
So, somebody sent me a posting about something that's going to go on in Southwood. Did you see that? Southwood Committee to Consider Regulations for Airbnb-style Rentals that came under, of Maslog.com. So, obviously, there's an issue in that town. And there are people who think it's great because they can rent, and an Airbnb can just be a bedroom.
Right.
It can just be a, you know, little loft over the garage or something. Whereas there's parking issues, there's, you know, maybe even a sign that says, you know.
You want to, you want to meet the same standards as a bed and breakfast, would have to.
Well.
They're not.
They're not the same.
They're not doing bed breakfast because they're not serving meals. And in some cases, what they're doing is they're renting out their entire house.
Okay.
But they're short-term rentals, and that's how the effort is tried to regulate them, is have a short-term rental regulation.
Okay.
That would then cover either the entire house or just a room, or rooms.
And again, who would ever enforce that again? Other than somebody reporting that.
Exactly, it's a back to, you know.
We did two come to us for Airbnbs. One when the first came out, and then there was a second one.
You might know about it, you might not, you know?
Sorry, yeah, ZB A, yeah, for the ZB A.
Oh, they came through ZB A?
Like five, six years ago.
There's, that's basically a use that I think the state needs to regulate. Because that's where, that's the best approach for regulation, is that. And I know in San Francisco and some states, large cities and states have been able to work on agreement with the internet platforms to make sure they get licensed and properly regulated. Because the issue is that somebody's written, if I come in as a bed and breakfast and I comply with the law, I'm getting fire marshal inspection, I'm getting all the safety inspections, all the health inspections. If I go on one of these internet platforms and sign agreement with them to rent out my space that way, I'm not. And people don't realize that. They may comply, they may not comply. And that's the reason there has to be some type of state approach to get a handle on this.
But it may not happen, and it may not happen for a long time.
The state has enacted a law on that, and I know people exploring how to use it.
How would you, I don't know.
Well, here's an example.
Police the Airbnb.
Pardon me?
How you would police the Airbnb, like how?
Well, it would be, like Paul just said, it's kind of like citizen policing. So, maybe I'm a widow and I have a big house and I have six bedrooms, and I post Airbnb.
I'm sorry, Cindy.
That sounds like a home occupation to me.
You have a room, because I'm looking at. You have great scenarios.
Why are all the examples about you tonight?
This is a good example. And not only that, I actually owned a rental property once and I posted on those sites. Not in Southampton. Excuse me, this is quite serious. So anyway, I have a lot of bedrooms, and I decide to post the individual bedrooms. And then that means six different cars, because I had six different bedrooms, or maybe, you know, something like that. And the neighbors complain, and we say, well, what is the bylaw on that? And I just wonder, and you're saying, we have to wait for the state to.
No, I'm not saying, from practical perspective, the state needs to be able to get a handle on this because that's how you're going to get the, the big issue with the state is the loss of lodging tax.
That's what they're missing out on.
Yeah, that's.
That's why they're not forcing.
And the inspections for failure to get the health inspection, fire inspection, stuff like that. So then the state has to be able to step in and do that. But you can do a local bylaw that requires, that puts on the record they had to license and had to be inspected so that you make sure that is on the books. Whether it's stolen or not is a whole another question. And what's interesting is I went into the Airbnb website a few years ago because it really fluctuated. Sometimes there'd be five properties in South Hadley and Airbnb Center.
You checking that out?
Next month there'd be 20, and then six months later there'd be seven, and it kept fluctuating. And you couldn't find where they were. Because most cases, they wouldn't give you the address.
That's right.
They don't want the community to find out. That's how I interpret it. There was one where you could figure it out because they put a picture of the outside and everybody could tell whose house that was. And so we figured that one out. And I thought was, if we told them, they'd figure everybody else, and that didn't happen. Because that's usually what happens.
I don't think though, in this town, I mean, we don't have the colleges, we don't have a beach, we don't have a lake. I mean, I'm not saying not lake.
Well, not really, Brian, because, Ryan, because you've got Williston, you've got the colleges in Westfield, you know, people will stay in a certain area.
Boston.
I didn't see any right now available.
Would you just go on Airbnb?
I didn't do the other.
In Boston, what most triggered the interest in Boston is the lack of affordable housing. Because what happens is when it goes to short-term rentals, it takes units off the market that might be available for quote-unquote affordable housing, the little A. And that's been the concern in Boston was the impact on housing prices, which I did not realize till I started reading about it, it makes sense. If you take 1,000 units off the market for long-term rental, because they're in short-term rental, that's going to drive up the price somewhere.
But we do, we do have, I swear, I see at least one bed and breakfast in town, right? Driving around. They do exist. I don't know where.
This is going to take a while.
I'm going to Google, I'm pretty sure I saw them.
Years ago, there you see that.
Everyone just did it next time, won't they?
What's the word, lead mines?
That's how everyone approached this, approached.
Okay, we're going to.
They'll be gone now.
We're going to hold on that. We won't do signs because I think you'll agree, there's probably going to be quite a bit of discussion on the signs. So, we're running almost a couple of hours now, and we've got two or three other small things to take care of, reports. So, signs, which is the last one we have to cover, will be in March, are we in?
Yes.
You're not do, you can't do this, the third Wednesday of this month.
No, no.
I did like Joy's suggestion, do Zoom, if it saves us cost.
Yeah, I saw.
That's a good idea.
Recommendation, yeah.
What's that again?
Are you okay with Zoom?
When Richard comes, so we don't have to.
You what, Zoom?
Zoom, it's like a computer, and you log on to it.
You want to do these by Zoom?
That's, yeah.
From here on in?
Well, the last one, yeah, if we can. Well, the, the last one, yeah, if we can.
The last one, oh.
We only have one more, right?
Yeah.
Well, we need to talk about how you're gonna approach this for the town meeting.
Yeah.
And that may determine how, when we need to do. Because my understanding, warrant articles are due April 5th. And my understanding also is that the practice in Southampton is that the planning board holds the hearing before they submit a warrant article.
The way we've been doing it, but.
So the law doesn't require it to be done that way. So, to do that means you need to hold a public hearing before April 5th.
But if you're saying state law doesn't require it, then it buys us some more time.
Yeah, it would. Because what, and you could do is you could submit a warrant article uh, that, that describes what you want to do on April 5th and hold the hearing, uh, the following week if you want to, or even the next day, and then make recommendation. And the reason I say that, because we need to take, before you advertise the hearing, we have to have the entire revised bylaw ready to go, because we gotta have that placed at the town clerk's office, wherever else you want to have it placed, before the notice comes out.
And it's also gonna go through legal review too, right? Just, all of these have to go.
Yeah.
That's, that's up to y'all.
That's what the town administrator's been, um, required. I guess that's why there's a deadline, so it goes to KP, um, for review.
Okay, so if it's going.
And they might change it.
That's why we have to make sure we identify what is clerical, to make it obvious to them. This, this is clerical.
Well, what I'm gonna be doing is, we'll have an article that says, I'm gonna suggest repeal and replace the zone bylaw with this bylaw. And then we'll have a new draft bylaw that will have a report attached to it that will state where we made what I consider substantive changes, such as adding terms into the definitions, uh, changes in permitting requirements for particular uses, such as some were, used to be required by, especially from by the zoning board appeals, and now it's by the planning board, those type of changes. And I know it's like nursery used to be a residential use, and now nursery, nursery school is under commercial. Uh, so tho, not, not those type of changes that have been made.
You wouldn't put in table of use, or, um, would you? No?
Yeah.
Too soon to put in table of use?
Well, they, they're gonna have to, because the way the work was done before I came here, you can't separate it out. You're gonna have to put all that in, in one, everything that's been changed, you're gonna have to put into one article. But, so you can't do it as a codification article based on what was done before I came.
Can we have more than one article, more than one warrant application?
You can, but the way it's done, you, where we, the changes were made, you can't separate them out like that. If, for instance, we had a qualified table use section that simply reflected what was on the books already, and then we wanted to make changes to that, we could have in the codified article this change use, and then have a subsequent article that would amend that. But the way it's structured, you're gonna, I'd recommend do a repeal and replace article that would repeal the zone bylaw in its entirety and replace it with the new zone bylaw in its entirety as presented.
Even though there's only just a few tricky changes in it?
It's more than a few tricky changes and start looking at the, what was done prior, before I came.
We covered city a lot that a couple of years back there, Larry, like.
Yeah, uh, three years before I came, I, I started looking at what was done, and I think all the changes were highlighted in Larry's drafts of it. And that's one, there's a few changes. That, there, there's some.
I think we're like eighty percent, well, yeah, eighty percent of it we've changed.
Yeah, that, there's a good bit that was, were minor, but there's some substance, substantial changes in there too.
Are they gonna, do you anticipate a lot of?
I don't.
Controversy at town meeting?
I wouldn't think you would, but, um, you know, you're a town better than I do.
I, I wouldn't think so.
Okay, good.
That's the reason we're gonna talk.
I think it cleans it up, and it.
It does.
A lot of stuff like the, the minor things that, it like.
Yeah, it's good.
Like the height restriction on, you know, accessory permanent structure, all that stuff. Like, that's like for the zoning board, we get so many people coming in for, to build a garage or a hoopla, and it's like, all those things, like, you kind of squash those. But, you know, that's the majority of like our special.
And so, yeah, so I'm, I'm gonna draft the art, the warrant language that says, that we're gonna do, and then have a report that explains what sections we made substantive changes and what sections were just strictly reformatting and numbering. And that's the reason we talked tonight about changing soda bylaw. We're making notes for next year, so we can come back next year and change those, that. Same with the multifamily, there's gonna be stuff there that we don't really like, but it's gonna be there. But next year, we'll come back with a replacement.
And, you know, inclusionary and affordable and whatever else.
So, if they're gonna be sending the revised bylaw to KP for review, when's your town meeting held?
Um, it, it, it's already, it's in, uh.
I thought it told me it hadn't been set yet.
It came out with our recent census thing, did you see that? That was printed right there.
He just emailed me yesterday and told me Monday.
Yeah, it was on that little insert.
It hadn't been set.
Uh, let's see here. It's right. It's the third of May, and then it said, subject to change. It was in the little insert with your census form that you got.
May 3rd.
Oh, 3rd, okay.
But.
Probably get pushed.
It might get pushed, and elections are the 17th of May. And we all, we're doing town meeting before elections right now, right? So anyway, it could get changed.
Okay, the reason I ask goes, okay, so we need to get, by May, April 5th, and we need to have the bylaw ready for KP review.
Yeah.
And I can have, yeah, I can have it ready by mid-March. Because we want to get them reviewing it as soon as possible.
Yeah.
Because they're gonna make, they're all gonna, they're gonna suggest changes.
Right, and so, just the changes, and that means then we go to public hearing?
No, you'll do public hearing on a proposed draft. And then, uh, you, uh, as my recommendations, you, you can do a report to town meeting that has revise, revisions at that time too. As long as, the hearing notice needs to address the substance of what's being proposed. The substance is gonna be that you're doing a repeal of existing zone bylaw with replacement of, of, by, by new bylaw. And these are areas you've changed. The actual wording of those, KP may come back and say, well, we, we think this definition should be put in, and that definition changed, et cetera. You still haven't changed the, the subject of the warrant article. You changed the substance of what's behind it, but not the wording of it. You wait for KP to review it, and then hold a hearing, you're probably not gonna have anything until next year.
What if we, uh, finish reviewing it tonight?
What?
What if we make it through the last section tonight? You only made it through all of this, right?
The signs one? That's gonna be like an hour, yeah.
Signs will discuss it next meeting, but that's.
I don't want to second for another hour, but if it allows us to get it done this year, is it worth an hour? I don't know.
Now, the, uh, whatever, we come up with the next meeting on signs, I can take care of that as long as I can get everything else done first. First, one thing I'm doing is, some of what's done before me was in the same format structure as what we've done, or what the other sections were done, so I'm making sure everything's in the same format.
You.
And I need to identify exactly what the changes were that was made.
Somebody mentioned Zoom for this section. Is there any way you can fit this in if I, if I do a special meeting in between our meetings, that you could fit in anything?
Yeah.
We need to finish that.
Done by Zoom. Yeah, let me know when you want to do it, and I'll see if I can fit in.
Can I ask one more question, Paul?
Yeah.
Could we take the sections we already covered and send them over to the lawyer to just start working on it?
He's, he's gotta have them.
And you put all in one package, so that.
Okay, it has to be in one package. You can't piecemeal them to them, okay. I'm just, I just want to try to get something in this here.
The problem you have in doing it as piecemeal.
Yeah.
You can't see the, how they fit in.
Okay, it's gonna cause more complications.
Yes, it would.
What, what's comfortable for you? Is everybody available? When, when, when aren't you available?
Start with Richard, what's?
I could, I could do one, I could do a Zoom meeting on 16th, you want to do one there?
Well, that's, okay.
All we're gonna do is talk about signs, right?
Well, that's our next meeting anyway, but I'm saying, do you, you want to do any, can you do it any other time?
Yeah, I, I.
Do it next Wednesday? That's park commission, Dan, can, can you, um?
Yeah, because park commission happens.
Six, right?
Yeah, I usually, I do park commission before and that run over here.
Okay, so what about next Wednesday then? The ninth?
Alright.
Anybody here on the school committee? How about you, Sarah? Are you good next Wednesday?
Yeah, 17th.
Alright, so I gotta post that by tomorrow.
How about you, Ryan?
I'm here, Diane.
Is it your birthday?
Cookies. Oh, no.
Well, you want cookies, huh? No, okay.
I'm just, it's, I'm not saying I won't be here, I, I will be here, could possibly.
Alright, so we'll have a special, special meeting on the ninth.
Wow, what are the odds?
Push that up, okay, is that, that good?
Okay.
Aquarius.
And did you just establish that'll be by Zoom?
Yeah, well, that, that's the sentiment here for, to get this finished.
So that's the ninth at 17:00.
On Zoom, though, right?
Yeah.
I'll send you the, um, info. I really like you on that, though, if you can delay your birthday by a day. Only because you've dealt more with ZBA on signage than, we, we've, we don't deal with it, you do.
Yeah. Well, that is moving right now, it's just another day.
Is it around number, like 30, yeah?
We can do a Tuesday. Tuesdays are okay too.
Pushing 60, the poor guy.
So, I look older than I actually am, let's put it that way.
You'll need a public hearing before the 5th, right? That's what you said you want to do?
Yeah.
Well, the ninth of February is, what did, what did you ask me?
Let's go to March calendar.
Can we make it?
April 5th.
Dan, do you have a meeting today?
So April 5th is.
It's parks, but I just leave. I just have to tell them what I, what I've been working on, and then I can head out.
We can, we could, our meetings are.
Or I can do second.
Second and 16th.
Oh, I'm not just.
But then again.
Could you do a March 30th?
It's true.
Doesn't matter to me, 7:00.
Does it benefit to that?
Bad time, so.
Do the 30th?
I'm starting to sleep.
30th on just a public hearing.
As long as you're quiet when you go home, you're okay. You wake them up.
Replacement of the zoning bylaw, it'd be just that one topic. And that related to have your hearing before April 5th.
It's late.
Hearing on the 30th, is that what you're proposing?
And I say that because you need to have everything.
Five AM every day, so.
Fifteen days, or at, or at least three weeks before the hearing. So if you had the hearing on 30th, then you would have, you'd have to March 11th to get the complete draft.
It's gotta be po, it's gotta be published March 11th, right?
No later than March 11th.
So are you guys, he's suggesting the public hearing be Wednesday, the 30th?
Whatever you want, whatever you want.
That's fine, I'm waiting.
Just here to help.
Just a second. So select board, Joy, they meet Tuesdays or Wednesdays? And is there anybody else in this building on the last Wednesday of the month? Do you know of?
Not that I'm aware of.
How about CPC? No?
CPC is, uh, 5:30, and, uh, they've been zooming in.
Alright, so that'll be another, uh, public hearing on, on the 30th.
Will we do that one live?
Yeah, that's gonna be here.
Yes, that's a public.
So, and who, how do y'all do your legal notices?
I usually do them.
Okay.
Or have been doing it, if you give me a, a draft, I'll get it to them.
I give the language that I think needs to be in there. And that means is by March 11th, we'll need to have the draft of the bylaw at town hall, and are you, do you typically post it on your website?
It can be. I, I don't know where it goes on the website, if it goes on the homepage, or, I'll check with Lucy, the clerk.
Because what we want to do is if you do that, we want to put in the legal notice where on the website it can be found.
Alright.
We can do it on the home, you know, on the front page.
So that'll give me basically four and a half weeks to get there, I think I'll give it to you.
Okay.
Guess you're gonna have to postpone that surgery.
I don't want surgery, let's, let's hope I don't have surgery.
There you go. Okay, are we all set for now?
So.
Oh, we got this other, other buil, building permit. What's that?
I do, I have, I'm all set with Richard.
I'm sorry, I thought you meant with every.
You're out of order.
Uh-oh, uh-oh. Does that mean I need to go home?
Um, Sarah, did you hear back from Paul?
He said he's thinking, it looks like right around $25,000, but he doesn't have his PC, and he can double-check it tomorrow, but.
Okay, a lot will be too late, but that's well under what we're looking for.
Is that 34 Crooked Ledge?
Yes. So, thank you, Richard, and have a good night.
Thank you, yeah.
Our next order of business, I've got a building permit for Jerry and Nora Morrow. 34 Crooked Ledge. If you just want to come down guys, and just take a peek. Four-bedroom, four-bedroom house. Here's the, this is Crooked Ledge. Long driveway up to a garage, the house here, subject field.
Is this the one that Keith went and looked at in terms of?
I'm not sure.
Okay.
What's the clearing? Does it say?
Uh, Paul said it was under 20.
Oh, that's what that.
Around 25. They wrote on here less than 40, which.
Yeah.
I just wanted him to verify it, because this really isn't this scaled. It, it seems to be a site I saw up here was about 13 acres, big site.
Yeah, so I can add to that, it's cleared as like 30,000, and it's a 13-acre parcel, and it goes down, and I think it doglegs, right?
Mm-hmm.
And there's like a, uh, pond, or they own part of a pond, it's my college roommate's building, so, I mean, it's like, but yeah, it's, they're way far from any weapons.
Is that before Keith or after Keith?
It's near our market, it lives. You gotta, just the working highway, it's like, uh, 80 something.
No.
It's right across the street, so when you turn on Crooked Ledge, there's like one, two, three, four, five, 10 houses, it's right, it's right there.
No objection.
Hey, you got a permit, or I got a, a motion on that?
Uh, I'll make a motion.
Dan?
To approve.
There's a second?
Second.
Was there a notice of this, of this, or that?
No, I just got it after I posted the, I picked it up after the, um, agenda was posted. So, all in favor?
Palmer, aye.
Stein, aye.
Aye.
Aye, 400. Okay, um, before I get to committee reports, I have the DOTA application for, see if they'll help us write the inclusionary zoning bylaw. So the application was in and faxed on the 22nd before the deadline.
Thank you for doing that, Paul.
I haven't, I don't know how long before they respond, but.
You, you earned your pay for the town. You, you earned your pay for the town.
Um, I hadn't heard anything about Gil Farms in a long time, which is, uh, next door to Ryan Gilaer's Fitch Farm Estate, so I sent off an email to John Furman, the, um, our peer reviewer inspector. Last I heard, the contractor was done with the project. I haven't been out there for a bit, but he had some work left to do, and because the owners couldn't decide what to do, he pulled out again. Attorney left me a message wanting to know what was left in the process. I told him his engineer would be better to answer that, but in general needed to finish the work and stabilize it, after winter install the top coat. So, um, I sent an email to, um, Ms. Hillios, which is one of the principals, and also attorney Gary LaCory, and I heard nothing back from either one of them. I asked for a status report, but I do think you had some information regarding what's going on over there.
Yeah, there's, there's family issues that, they're just kind of holding it up, because their attorney reached out to me as well.
So they haven't, they haven't put the top coat on, is that it?
The sidewalks are, yeah, I can tell you what's not done, the sidewalks aren't done, the top courses are done, the camera, you know, the drainage lines, all the inspections, the cleaning, uh, street trees, I don't think the electrical has been full, I don't know what river source, but it wasn't. So they're like, probably 70%, 75%.
So I think, because they asked for an extension there, um, because of the base coat not being on-
The winter.
The winter before, so, but I, I think they're coming up on their, uh, their due date, or completion date, so, um, we'll have to keep an eye on that and find out what's going on. Um, have you any idea how many lots are sold over there? Or is there any? Is there any sold on Gil? None?
Not as of the first of the year.
Hmm. So that could turn out to be a problem.
Do they have a bond, or do they have covenants to lots?
I gotta look, I can't remember. I've got the file at home, some, I got, have some of the files at home, some of it's upstairs here. I'll have to check it out. So that's the update on that. Um, now, committee reports, Cindy.
So, uh, one of the things you asked was whether CPC money could be used for drafting the inclusionary bylaw. Virginia's quick answer was no, and then she sent me back up, um, wording, because she connected with the person she goes to, to find out what's appropriate. Basically, the concern is that this isn't going to just be for, um, affordable housing, that it could likely sort of weep into other kinds of, uh, housing kind of questions, and, um, eh, there's a whole thing. No supporting rules of CPA, say the CPA shouldn't supplement funding that is part of the general budget. You know, I know we don't draw from the general budget, but theoretically, planning could go to the general budget and request funding for this. So bottom line, this is not going to work for going and utilizing CPC funding, so I'm glad you put in the DLTA application. So that's that. The other thing is, I sent out to everybody the draft of the, um, of the grant that's going to be used for the acquisition of the Courtney property on, um, Palmer Meadow Road, and it's going to be a drinking water protection grant. I don't know if you had a chance to quickly look, so it's a draft.
Mm-hmm.
But, um, planning board, and I think you've done this in the past, you probably already have a boilerplate letter that you've used in the past to support a project. If not, we could perhaps get one, but, um, I'd like to make a motion that planning board, um, approves support of this, and that would go as part of the grant process.
Who do I, or who's it go to, the letter?
Um, hmm. Well, the grant's being written by Kestrel Land Trust. Uh, let me double-check that.
Yeah, get me the particulars.
Yeah, yeah. Um, but it, actually, let me think about this for a second, it might need to go to the Water Commission, let me double-check that.
Right.
Because they're the ones, this is going to be a Water Commission project.
Mm-hmm.
It's got to go to town meeting, we will need CPC money for that, to the match on that, and, um-
Um, somebody want to make a motion that we support the, um-
I just did, I made the motion to support.
Is it right for you to make the motion, though? Because I'm being a little too bureaucratic or about it, because you don't-
Well, I, I'm actually just on the periphery, I'm-
Okay, okay, so, it's okay for you to make the motion. Yeah, I'll second the motion, then.
Thank you.
Motion's been made. Motion's been made, second all in favor, aye.
Aye.
Thank you. All right, let me get to the name on that. Do you have a boilerplate letter that you support?
I've got something I've used for something in the past.
Okay, great.
I can pretty much go off of the grant that you sent, the copy of that, and figure something out.
Okay, great. Well, you probably supported the other water protection grant from a couple of years ago on the other part of Palmer Meadow.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah. So that's that. Um, I don't think I have anything else.
Sarah, or Dan?
I don't have anything, nothing related.
Okay, I've got a couple of warrants here, one's for Richard, his invoice for January was $610.64 for eight hours plus mileage, 610.64, a motion to approve.
A motion to approve.
Second.
Motion being made by Sarah, seconded by Dan, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. The second warrant is reimbursement for me. For invoices I've accrued, uh, over, over 21 and 22, because I just hadn't put anything in, but this all has to do with the planning board laptop, for the most part, Microsoft software subscription, $69.99, Carbonite backup, $83.99, again, another Microsoft, um, subscription. The first one was for 622.20, this is for 620.21. Uh, I made nameplates for our two, um, members, Sarah and Dan, um, for our, we have full-blown meetings, I put the nameplates out.
Oh, I love that.
Uh, $22.45, again, the January 22 Carbonite backup, $83.99, so there's like two years' worth of software and, um, cloud. And then, finally, toner for my copier, every, like, three years, I put in a voucher for a toner copy for $34.99, because I do quite a bit at home, but not enough to put in for every year, so that total comes to $365.40, and it's like a two-year, um, out-of-pocket expense.
I move to approve $36.40 for the warrant.
$365.40.
Sorry. $36.
$36, $365.
For the amount, the amount so stated.
Yes.
I'm volunteering, and I'm going backwards, too.
You can write it off on your taxes.
I guess so. Do I, who had the second, Cindy had the motion?
I'll second it.
Dan? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
I, I do have to ask a question, um, Sarah Simmons from, um, the housing-
Yep.
She asked me, so you wrote the DLTA grant request, and she said, could that only be used for the assistance from PVPC, or can we, if that grant is granted, can we use it to hire Richard to write the draft? Do you happen to know the answer?
Um, I, I think if DOT work is done by PVPC-
PVPC.
Yeah, they-
Well, that's right, okay.
That's PVPC would hire Richard.
They, like Ken Comia, you know.
Right, right, so, so somebody, maybe Ken, somebody from PVPC would, if approved, would write it.
Yes.
But then we could use Richard for like an hour or two to just kind of review it, and see-
Yeah, he's our, he's our independent review.
But actually, if, if it's reviewed, and you know, Ken Comia's a planner.
Yeah, he is, yeah.
You know.
And they know each other.
I'm sure Richard would look it over maybe in, quickly, but I think that they would be, do a pretty good comprehensive job on it, I would hope.
So, are we all comfortable with that, if Ken's, yeah, great? Okay.
It's fine. We'll just hope we, hope we get the grant, right? That's the next step.
Yeah.
We get the grant.
I don't have anything else, anybody else have anything to add? So keep in mind on your calendars, February 9th there for that special meeting, to get that out of the way, and-
So we'll do a Zoom, and did we want to do earlier? Did we want to do earlier?
No, just, yeah, don't do it for me, then, just if you did.
What's that?
If you do it earlier.
What do you mean, at seven?
On for 6:30 and stuff.
On what day is this?
Yeah, that's good, I don't, are you good with six, Dan?
Yeah, sure.
Um, CPC meets, oh, 5:30, um-
That's right.
You're on too many boards, Cindy.
Really? You think?
You just have to excuse yourself early.
Well, um, but I can't remember.
Or you can just chime, chime in, log in when you get home.
I could just be like on two computers.
Because Paul Fergoli probably will be available, will have a-
And I'm not going to be available on the 16th, um, I already have a conference.
Yeah, whatever you work out.